Okay, well, welcome back, everyone. It's beyond 1:15, so we're set to reconvene and we're we need five members of this committee to constitute a quorum. I do see now that we've got five members here, so I'm going to call the meeting back to order. We left off, we were at item 11.1 in the Committee of Staff reports, and that was pulled out by Counselor Michael Schu. So go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For this one, I have only two questions. The first one is, is this a convey convince of easement only temporarily or permanent? Through the chair.
Through the chair to Counselor Schu. This is a permanent easement that's been identified to facilitate the infrastructure for the signalized intersection at that location. It's a benefit to the community and it's also a benefit to the individual property owners.
Okay, my next question is, is there any schedule for the work and how long is it expected to take?
The work will take place in 2024 and will probably take two to three months to fully execute and be operational.
Okay, clear. That's that. Thank you, Chair. That's all about.
Okay, so you're going to move the staff recommendation there? Okay. Any other discussion on 11.1? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? That carries. Okay, we had 11.2 passed on consent, 11.3 was pulled out by Counselor Davids.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. I feel like we didn't really settle the signs on boulevards. Like, I'm, and I'm not really clear by the wording of this. So we are allowing signs on boulevards, we're not like when we say allow one sign per candidate on each street frontage associated with a private property, we're not improving what we saw last time because it's just going to be open season to put these signs, in my opinion, in front of people's houses until someone catches you. If there's no signs on boulevards, it's easy. Bylaw can see, oh, there's signs on public property, there's signs on boulevards. I personally thought we were trying to reduce the number of signs in public places, and for me, that would include boulevard. Also, I would like clarification on, so it's one sign per house, period, unless you are in a corner lot. Those were my two questions.
Okay, Commissioner Steele?
Through you, Mr. Chair. So what we've attempted to do is reach a compromise between the two things based on the council direction we received last time. Staff's understanding was that the direction to allow signs on the boulevards was just to overcome the enforcement and regulatory issue associated with the fact that no one really knows where their property line is unless you actually get a survey. So what we've done is we've crafted the policy so that wherever someone puts it, it appears like it's on private property. It always has to appear that it's on private property, but if it happens to be technically on the boulevard, then we'll accept that as being the private property. And if that makes sense to you, so you have to have the sign, if you have a sidewalk in front of your house, you have to have the sign back a meter from the sidewalk on the private property side. That might fall in the boulevard, it might fall in the private property, but it appears associated with that private property, and that private property owner always has to give permission for it to be there.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair. So that's one sign per private property. Unless you're on a corner, you could have two if you have two frontages.
Through you, Mr. Chair. That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. You're willing to move the staff recommendation? Okay. And Counselor Thompson?
Thank you very much, and I definitely want to thank staff for all the work they put in this. And I know staff actually warned us way back when that this, what we were asking to be done here can be somewhat convoluted and difficult to read as, and fully understand as Counselor Davidson has just pointed out. And to that end, I'm looking at the bylaw as amended or recommended. And I wanted to just go over a couple of things. And again, thank you for that explanation. I certainly saw how it was written to say if there's a sidewalk, then it's got to be on your side, the private side of the sidewalk. And if in lieu of where there is not a sidewalk, then you're using the two meter from the edge of road and so forth. So I think, I think this is all good wording. And it's actually something too that I think you might want to think about with the from what we saw this morning, which had to do with what was it? The lawn, oh, the Slow Down Lawn Sign Program. I think this could be good information to actually incorporate into that if it isn't there already. One of the things that I did notice, and I can see where people can get a little convoluted, is that a lot of these clauses have to be taken in conjunction with each other. So as an example, you've got 7.14.2 that mentions what Commissioner Steele was talking about, that you have to do this with, it has to be by obtaining permission from the property owner as being number one. So you carry that through all the way, but when you get to other clauses, and I could give an example here. You know, it'll say an election sign may not be placed on public property if there is an election sign on the adjacent private property. Sorry, actually, this is where I wanted to get a little bit of clarification because we do talk about at some, somewhere in the clauses here that we're talking about per candidate. So it's conceivable that, as an example, in this last election, I had my own sign up there, but I also had, you know, the mayor's sign on my property. So I think it's potential for anybody to have up to five candidate signs up on their property. So I know you had warned us about how this could be convoluted, but I don't see it really going down that path where everybody puts the mayor, puts their ward counselor, puts the trustee, puts the two, you know, local and regional people on their property. So I don't think we're going to have that issue, but I guess we'll, you know, the next election will certainly tell us that. But yeah, in 7.14.6, it does talk about no person shall erect or display an election sign or cause to be erected in the portion of the street that is municipal boulevard directly adjacent to private property, provided that the sign is on the private property side, yada, yada, yada. Again, I would think that even though it's mentioned earlier, one of the other clauses, we should say without the owner's permission. I think we should embed it in there so that nobody just takes that clause on its own and goes from there. But all in all, this is, this is exactly what I think we needed. The only other comment that I had to make was on 7.14.10. And it talks about no person shall erect or display, and it goes about in the case where the private property has both front and side lot frontages, instead of saying front and side, it's possible that they could have a front and rear to different roads. So I think we should just say multiple frontages. That would be my recommendation on this. Otherwise, I absolutely love what staff have come up with here. Thank you very much.
So I'm going to call the vote on Counselor Davidson's motion. All in favor? Any opposed? Here's unanimously. We talked about signs without going on for an hour. That's that's a feat. Okay. Next item that was pulled would be 11.9, and that was also Counselor Davids.
No.
Hold that. Oh, okay, yeah. So we got, next is 11.5. As a result of the transportation master plan update, there's just a staff report that it be adopted, the staff recommendation that we adopt that. Anyone want to move it? Okay. Counselor Tree moves the transportation master plan. Any discussion? Any opposed? Any, all in favor? Any opposed? That carries. Okay, and then also 11.6, moved by Mayor West, that the traffic operations and safety strategy be adopted. All in favor?
No, I gotta, I just wanted to make a quick comment.
Comment here.
Geez, you're getting so excited. I mean, I'm excited about this too, but I was not as excited as you. So this has been a long time coming, and Dan T. and your team, I want to just say thank you very much. And given that you've brought this forward in one of the last meetings before council, you don't need to bring me anything else for Christmas. That's all you need to buy me. So I thank you for that. I think this is really an important thing. And I think, you know, we all know as counselors, and I certainly know as mayor and as previous ward counselor, that we get a lot of complaints, and they've been, they've been rising for a number of reasons. I think one of which is the growth of our community. You know, somebody told me one time, and this was an engineer, so I'm trying to talk like an engineer now, that managing traffic is simply about managing kinetic energy. And I thought that sounded really smart. That's why I said it. And I'm seeing the engineers in the crowd nodding and smiling, so that's good. But what I would say about that is it's interesting. I do think that's an interesting way to look at it because it's all about, you know, people not hitting each other. And as we grow and as we get busier, I think that becomes more of a concern just on that basis. But I think what this, the whole idea of this report, and I'm not even going to go into the weeds on any of the recommendations that were made because I think it's a really thorough, excellent report, definitely worth the weight. But it is a way for staff who are professionally trained to look at the kinds of problems and find solutions when a problem does exist to be able to come up with a comprehensive set of ways to respond reactively and proactively now in our communities to avoid conflicts and avoid people getting hurt, property being damaged, and so on. There will always be issues with, with traffic. I mean, it's, it's all related to individual driver behavior and other behavior of people on other modes of transportation. But at the end of the day, we try to make our systems in our communities as designed so that they're as safe and well-engineered as we possibly can get. So I do appreciate this. I think that it's important for council members to know that, and I know this myself through my experience, is that you know, this is also a process that will be improved, I think, that will allow us to take concerns that the public have about a particular location in the city and give it to staff to take a look at and let them, in their professional opinion, balance and determine what is needed in that particular case. And I know, you know, I've dealt with stop signs a few times in my time as a ward counselor. And, and you know, sometimes people will come to us and say, well, you know, we've got to put in more stop signs to slow traffic down. And I have learned a little bit about this, and I know that, you know, where stop signs are not warranted from our, and recommended from a professional person in that, in that traffic engineering field, it can actually make matters worse than, and rather than better. So I think that what I like about this is that I'm confident that our staff will be looking at our traffic patterns in the individual locations and be able to take actions that are well-thought-out and are actually going to, by best practices, make the, the roads and the, and the various forms of transportation in our community safer. So I do, in all seriousness, want to thank our staff for doing this work. I know that this is a lot that goes into something like this, and I'm really excited to see some of the things rolled out in the early days. And as was said in the presentation, some of the, the public education that's going to go along with it because I think that that really will go a long way into making, getting the public to understand their expectations and also as drivers and walkers and cyclists and maybe even on micro mobility, what the etiquette is and what the best practices are for safety. So I wanted to just thank staff for this and say how happy I am to see this in front of us today.
You, Counselor Shilovitz?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, my thanks to the team. You guys are amazing. And the presentation was great, and you've done so much to, to help me and the ward five residents with regards to traffic management that I look forward to what the future is going to bring. I wanted to thank you also for the flexible bollards. They are, in my opinion, one of the best tools to use for critical awareness, driver awareness. I've seen them in Montreal, and you see them straight away. And I've always thought to myself, gee, would be nice to have those. So thank you so much. I look forward to, to us seeing these pop up wherever they can be installed because they are an amazing, amazing sign for drivers. And also, thank you for the Slow Down Lawn Sign Program coming our way. That's going to be great too. I think we'll all be able to, we'll all be able to promote that and get everybody to get nice signs on their lawns. Just don't make, you know, a mess of them, but it would be good. So thank you very much. Much, much appreciated. You guys do absolutely fantastic work. Thank you.
Counselor, and Deputy Mayor Chan?
Thank you very much, Chair. I want to echo because before me, Mayor and Councilor Civiles. And thank you again to our transportation engineering team. Certainly, this, as Mayor West was saying, you know, having been here for quite a while, and I can honestly say that traffic calming is among one of the most requested measure, that action that residents ask this city and the town to do. So thank you. And in particular, I remember the days when the first, the speed radar board was put on on a part of bases on ITAC and how effective it was. So thank you. Now, I did mention about that when asking question about the slides, presentation, I did not raise it then. I just want to compliment also on this, one of the appendixes is summary, which we, all those sections that's including need to be looked at. And specifically, that talking about traffic calming. Now, I might miss it. I don't seem to find those, what you call it, roundabout that is considered, or maybe, maybe it's a different wording, but in particular, I can see particularly in the newer development area in Richmond Hill, those roundabout, are these not considered as a traffic calming tool? Through you, Mr. Chair.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, they're not specifically a traffic calming tool, roundabouts. They're more of a traffic control. So we would use something like a roundabout in lieu of an always stop control, for example. And it's really sort of more of a traffic control at an intersection rather than a traffic calming tool. But certainly, it does help in some cases to improve safety.
Thank you for the answer because I did see in the summary in particular, you do have the all stop intersection policy, so it does fit into that. The other, the other point is that in addition to always stop control policy, I did raise the question about the automated speed enforcement program that was being proposed. So, and I did engage the presenter here for discussion afterwards. So would that be the plan after, if today committee and next week council adopted this? As is, is the expectation staff will bring back maybe in 2024 based on the data? It has to be based on the data, supported by the data. This might be the two locations, five locations that staff might recommend to be considered for certain automated speed enforcement. Those cameras. Through you, Mr. Chair. Is that the plan?
So through you, Mr. Chair. As I mentioned in the presentation, we're, right now, we're targeting 2025. So we are undergoing the first steps of that process. We are doing that audit of the community safety zones. So we're trying to identify as many locations, and then we're hoping that in 2024 we can prep those locations with the pads and locations for ASE. And at the same time, we're trying to find a data processing center to be able to process the tickets, enter in the necessary agreements with the target to try to roll something out maybe in 2025 if we can find that data processing center. And then at that point, as part of that exercise, we'll determine the priority locations and determine what's feasible and then start implementing that program. Yes.
Thank you. And I also take this chance to thank Counselor Davidson for bringing your motion with very detailed statistics cited from the original police. And in that particular motion, there was also mentioned about the six pilot, if I remember correctly. Maybe it's not particularly highlighted in the report, or maybe I missed it. Is there something about that six pilot, that area or projects that was mentioned that we might see feedback, maybe not today, but at later point in time? Through you, Mr. Chair.
Through you, Mr. Chair. So again, I'd have to refresh my memory on exactly what those pilots were, but certainly we can take it back and have a discussion.
Maybe the move of their motion back in September could help.
Mr. Chair, go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, we had, we passed a motion that I proposed where we would try traffic calming, a traffic calming measure in each ward by like the end of the second quarter. But I don't want to limit us to that. And if this is part of the process and we're going to have at least one, that pretty much fulfills that motion from my standpoint. But I hope there's more than that to come.
Through you, Mr. Chair. So if I can respond to that, so sorry, that clarity is, yes. So the six pilots, so that's what we're referring to in terms of the priority locations that are supposed to be implemented in Q2. So what we'll be doing in Q1 is bringing back a report identifying those locations that we're deeming as a priority. And that's where we'll be piloting some of these new tools that we have in the toolbox. And it likely won't be limited to just one location per ward. In some cases, depending on the tool that we're using, it might be in a neighborhood or a number of streets in that, in that area that we identify as priority.
Thank you very much for the answer, and I guess also with this new, more fulsome kind of ranges of tool, and I sort of look forward to, well, first of all, supporting motion of one of us and also give the degree of confidence for our staff, for our transportation engineering along with the community services in terms of enforcement, with also strategic communication, with communication. Because as I always believe that setting the rules and policy, one thing, letting people know education, another thing, but also enforcement, because otherwise you can change, you know, 10, 10 kilometer per hour speak on the, on all road. But there's no enforcement that sometimes people tend to forget. So thank you very much to you and the whole team. Looking forward to having this for, until what, 2051? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. So if there's no other discussion, I'm going to call the vote on 11.6. All in favor? Any opposed? Here's unanimously. And 11.7 is the Master Environmental Servicing Plan. Mayor West moves that it be adopted. Any discussion there? You were said earlier about less interest in that? All in favor? Any opposed? That carries. Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. T., can we go on, Mr. T.? Okay, good job.
I'm fired.
Okay. Okay. 11.9 was moved by Counselor Davidson.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, this is regarding development of, of the property at 52 Beaufort Hills Road. And I'm happy to see that the applicant heeded the discussion from council and has reapplied for one house rather than two on the lot. So in total, there will be two houses on this lot, not three. And that's the trend we're hoping to keep in the Beaufort Hills Black Forest neighborhood. But there has been an issue about trees and tree removal and some of it not authorized. And the neighbors of this property are extremely invested in keeping as many trees as, as am I. I would like to hear from staff, how have previous issues with unauthorized tree removal been addressed? And how can we prevent it in the future? Through you, Mr. Chair.
Attorney Commissioner Glas?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Page six of the report outlines that there was an issue with respect to tree removal. Enforcement was sought on the site and a compliance letter was issued. And the trees identified are actually going to be replanted. The owner has applied for a tree permit now. They're, they're doing it the right way, if I can put it that way, as part of their proposal. So they're going to be, be made to replant many of the trees, 31 out of the 38, and seven will be dealt with through cash and lieu. So again, I hear the counselors' comments with respect to tree removals on the site. I believe as part of the process for the approval of the dwelling, they will have to go through a site alteration permit. And there will be a review of the trees on the site. They have to give the proper studies into the municipality, and they will be observed through that process.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair. What is, can you just state publicly, what is the protocol if a neighbor believes trees are unlawfully being removed? What is their, what is, what is their next move?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Perhaps I can defer the question to Commissioner Steele. Her group is involved with the, the actual enforcement of those that matters.
Through you, Mr. Chair. So the, if someone observes trees being illegally removed, they can either call Access Richmond Hill, which will be directly transferred to community standards, or they can call the bylaw line, either the after-hours hotline or the regular bylaw line. And bylaw staff will address that. Or if it's during regular business hours, it's Parks Planning staff that will actually attend because they, they are the owners of the permit system.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. I just want to say to the applicant, thank you for making those changes and respecting the existing neighborhood. And that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So you're moving the staff report? Thank you. Okay, and I'm very pleased that there's been, there's a resolution there that people are able to live with. I know not everyone's happy, but glad to move forward here. Anyone else have any discussion or comments there? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? That carries. Okay. 11.11. You have the delegations, and someone want to move the staff report there? Board Counselor, Draft Mill Pond Park Revitalization Master Plan, you're willing to move it? Want to speak as well? Go ahead.
Well, first of all, thank you so much, Sir, you, Mr. Chair, to our staff, also to our mayor as well. Our, you know, our mayor was, you're the ward four counselors. I know this project's been there for many, many years. Thanks for the support from our current mayor, our vice, also from our residents, and also for our staff as well. I know this is a really complex project. And we involved many, many of the feedbacks through the many, many years as well. I would acknowledge some changes here. I'll be very funny, right? On existing parking lot, which is source of that Mill Pond. We do have a lot of new initiative here. We're going to decommission the current Mill Pond arteries, artery exhibition centers. Also, we move to that parking center, which is going to be have more modernized styles. Also, we have changed the sidewalk here as well, you can see. And currently, this road, Mill Road, allowed pedestrian cross street from one end to another, three entries is very dangerous. I think this new proposal will be better. We shifting all the traffic to the main road. This way we back, we're going to be preventing some car incidents here. So it's a perfect improvement. Also, we can see in the middle, there are going to be a new bridge similar as the Lake Wilcox. We're going to have some beautiful view here. I hope in next few years, there's going to be another Richmond Hill set view. So a lot of people will come here. Excellent. And also in the north side, we do have a lot of old trails. I was there for, with some residents, and we observed a lot of the cracks in the middle of the road and a lot of issues. I think this new plan is great. So we solve that problem. We get a new pass here. So this way, we don't need to take care of all the existing infrastructure instead of new one. But definitely it take times. Also, I talked possibility regarding to the winter services because in the future, we can build up a new road. because in the future, we can build up a new road here. So this way, maybe snow service can be used here in winter. A lot of residents can have a place to visit in this area similar as the Wilcox Lake. On the north side, which is close to the Union Road, we do have a stiver park. I was hearing a lot of feedback from residents. No one is happy about that current situation. And we see this plan as well. So we do have tennis court will be there. Also, we have a pickleball court there as well. Also, the park existing one will be open for public. And there are quite changes. So I see, I'm excited to see this plan. And we're expecting, looking for more implementation time here. This is my comment. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Mayor West?
Okay, thank you. Thank you, councillor, and for moving that. So I will say, this has been an absolute home run in terms of the process that staff has helped us with. The comments that we've received and the volume of comments that we've received and their receptiveness to listening to the community to get this right on the bull's eye is a real testament to the fact that we've, you know, we're here today, ready to approve it, and we've got no additional comments at the last second. So I really, of all of the processes and many of them have been really good that staff has gone through with the public. This has been an absolutely fantastic process. And so I really sincerely want to thank the staff that's gone through and produced such an extensive, well-thought-out plan and really involved listening to the, to the public in this. There's, you know, it's funny because I think that one of the comments we heard today was that we want to hurry and speed up the process. And I'm thinking as Mr. Hendricks was saying that, that he's probably saying that because the design and the, and the plan is so good that, you know, it's kind of like I want it and I want it now. And I'm acutely aware, that's an understatement, of the financial pressures that we have when it comes to building any sort of infrastructure, including parks. So I'm going to say this with the, with that firmly in mind. But if there is anything that we can do to speed up the process, I really do think he makes a very good point. And I think he does speak on behalf of a lot of people in that area that even if we can make incremental progress in some creative way that staff can do to make this happen quicker. And I know that we're going through a capital sustainability exercise starting imminently. And this is all going to have to be looked at in the broad scope of everything that's happening in the community. So I'm asking for staff to have an investigation about that, not, I don't know what will happen. And in fact, I'm, you know, I'm fully aware of the pressures that we face. But the point, he does make a good point that, like the pond, I think probably does need to be dredged pretty soon. The north part of the Mill Pond Park, it really isn't. I mean, we bought it a long time ago because that's when the opportunity presented itself. But it really isn't in super fantastic shape. And it really would be great if we could see some improvements in there sooner rather than later. And the trail system that's presently in between, which I realize is a bigger project, also is an imminent concern. But anyway, I'm going to say that, knowing that, you know, the outcome and the pressures that we're under are, you know, really restricting our ability to do things like that. But, and I know staff will, will work for grants and other types of funding to, to get us where we need to go quicker. But I just want to say that. The other thing I think that Adriana Pizano, who spoke about with, on behalf of the Winter Carnival, does also make a good point. And interestingly, I was watching Commissioner Steele and her speak just before the break. So I suspect that some of the information that she was seeking has probably already been delivered. But I would ask staff to make sure that they're in communication with the Winter Carnival. Because the Mill Pond Park Master Plan will impact the Winter Carnival's operation. And there's no getting around that. But we just need to figure out the way to mitigate that impact as much as we can. But I will say, as somebody that lives in that area, somebody that's represented that area for a long time and now is mayor, this is the jewel of Richmond Hill that we have many jewels. There's more than one jewel. But, but it is certainly one of them. And right now, it does need a little bit of a polish, more so than some of the newer projects and parks that we've revitalized. And I know that's very important to our community. So I know staff will do everything that we can to get that done and get it done as quickly as we can. So thanks very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. So, not sure if this will pass. There's three other speakers, so some debate. Councillor Silivat, you're next. Okay, very good. Regional local councillor Chan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I echo the mayor's set. And also in particular to two delegates, one used that to extend that could be in any way, form or shape. I says financially and from the capital planning and project standpoint can be accommodated. Obviously, it shouldn't have the better. And number two is that, yes, no doubt, Mill Pond is also a lot of history about City of Richmond Hill or Committee of Richmond Hill. As we celebrate 150 anniversary, this is a place to cherish and celebrate and to really further revitalize. That's the key word. So I do like to add my comments on to it. Certainly recognize Adriana and also Winter Carnival have been there for now, what, 55 years? Maybe one, and the mayor mentioned about he has been long involved in many others. Maybe in addition to this, just comment in the south, mostly on the south Mill Pond area can be also have activities, whether for Winter Carnival and other activities to further expand our pond or to include in the northern part of Mill Pond as well. And as in the report itself, not the staff one, but the real master plan itself, it spell a lot of good things. And one in particular I want to highlight is on the community involvement. I for one would fully support to engage our diverse communities in terms of highlighting, as shown in some of such photographs, I guess in somewhat similar to other celebratory parks in Richmond Hill, including Richmond Hill, they would done Observatory Park that outline the history or some of the particular species that, that may be in the area that would be both educational and also make it more informative when people are using along the trail or the park. I think some places even build, if the money allow, a little gazebo or something called interpretive center. I don't know what it means that obviously add to the expenses. On the other hand, there might be also open opportunities to maybe in terms of if there are appropriate grant for heritage parks and things of that nature, somebody to consider. But we need to celebrate the rich history of this Mill Pond. And I think there's something worth to be pursuing that some of the things are shown in here, just like Lake Wilcox. Even when you walk on the boardwalk, walking on even concrete path, the cravings and whatever down there to really showcase, again, the rich history of Mill Pond, whether from north or south, south to north, but also considering that would be appreciated. The other one, I do know that there would be a parking further study on that. That's something I'm looking forward to it because in the meantime, it's probably best to walk there or cycle there. And parking is always a challenge. But I'm also mindful, perhaps also the number of areas particular, at least one, if not more, on the artist gallery, things of that nature that perhaps could also engage them, I'm sure to engage them as well in this further discussion. Because they are in the vicinity and the vitality and the future uses or more popular use of Mill Pond might have some degree impact on their exhibit or the location there as well. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, for me to make those comments. I support the motion in front of us.
Okay. Councillor Thompson?
Thank you through the chair. Certainly, Mayor West has covered a lot of what I was about to say. So I'm really just going to bring it down to a question at this point. And that is that if we did want to speed this up, the process, or say we wanted to direct staff to do that, what would, what are the impacts that we would really need to consider here? I recognize that typically there's going to be other priorities that will have to, you know, be moved back in order to accommodate that. But if you could just spell out exactly what all would be entailed or what the possible other outcomes would be in trying to speed that up. So at what expense would it be to us? That's what I'm looking at. It doesn't have to be financially. It could be in terms of other projects.
Through the chair to councillor Thompson. Appreciate the question. If you recall, part of the discussion at our capital budget presentation a few weeks ago, we talked to some extent the due process that needs to take place from visioning, planning, preliminary design, detailed design. And Mayor West did speak to, one of the primary obstacles is financing and why sometimes we phase projects. For example, David Dumlop Observatory, while it's a much larger plan in magnitude and size, it's been phased as a result of the budgeting pressures. So there are things that can be done to expedite. It can, depending on the scope of work. Some projects can continue 12 months of the year, depending on what that work is. And providing that there's unlimited budget and understanding that there will be impacts to the community. For example, if there's going to be an impact to, you know, the Winter Carnival. If you fully close something down, imagine reconstructing a road. Fully closing the road, you will get it done a lot faster. However, we usually need to keep our roadways, whether they're regional, local in the undertaking of work, open during time. So the work takes a little bit longer. So we're always aiming to improve the construction experience. However, we are limited to some constraints like keeping roads open and budgetary constraints. In some areas, what I can tell you as an example, where there's opportunities, it's primarily in industrial areas and maybe not so much in this area, where we look to implement night work. Because that allows crews to work unencumbered. For example, this is common for paving operations. Where you can allow that as a mechanism to expedite work. So it's specific to the project, the environment around, to the extent that there are residents that would be impacted by noise. There's often a lot of tools in the toolbox that we do look at. But financing has predominantly been one of the obstacles to delivering a large project in whole in one shot.
Right, through the chair. Definitely thank you for the answer. And I think it's, it's good for us to be cognizant of those and make sure that we understand what the potential impacts are. So that's all my questions. Thank you very much.
Councillor Davidson?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. I just want to say, I do think this is a great plan. And to the folks that came about the, the Winter Carnival, it's always a great experience. But should the Mill Pond not be able to fulfill its duties? Lake Wilcox is fabulous in winter and free parking. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That carries. Many, many jewels we have. Okay. Lost my chair. Yeah, 1112 was moved. This pulled by councillor Tree. Go ahead, councillor Tree.
Okay, thank you so much. I know I read through this, this documentation in pieces of 1112. It's a little bit history. So I would ask maybe city staff, can you help us give a high-level background about this, this item? Thank you so much. Through our chairs, to our staff, can, can ask, our staff give us a high-level explanation what's going on here about this project?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Manager Maria is here to answer the questions. She and her staff have been intimately involved with the applicant, going over the various proposals. So this latest proposal is before council. She can give a high-level overview of where we're at right now.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Glanis. Through you, Mr. Chair. To answer your question, I'll give you a brief overview, councillor Tree. So just to give you an understanding, this application came in, official plan amendment and zoning by law amendment in November of 2020. At that point, they came in with a proposal that was originally, it was at 731 dwelling units. The heights were 18 stories, 35 stories and 15 stories. Obviously, we went back and forth with them. They came in with another proposal, revised one. We're calling it the second submission in December of 2021. At that point, they came in with 666 units, three buildings, again, heights of 29, 27 and 7 stories. At that point, staff were not satisfied. We went back and forth with, with comments and summaries. And at that point, they appealed. So they appealed, I believe it was in May of 2022. We did spend the summer going back and forth with the applicants. But in, sorry, in March of 2023, my apologies. We did prepare a directions report to council. It was a direction to appear at the Ontario Land Tribunal against the proposal. So staff were not in agreement with the 29, 27 and 7 stories. So through the summer with council's direction, we maintained conversations. We had several meetings with the applicant, as Mr. Bronskill had mentioned in his delegation earlier. And that brought us to the November 18th settlement offer, which is before you in this report. So this current settlement offer, which is before you, which is in detail in the report, proposes still three towers, three buildings, 22 stories adjacent to Young Street, 15 stories, 12 stories with two steps downs, eight and four towards the natural heritage system. They're connected by six-story podium and a four-story podium on the third building. So we agreed to this settlement. It does expire, so I'd like to make that quite clear to council. They provided us with this settlement offer. Staff were generally satisfied. We've worked very high level with all of the internal departments and external agencies to take a look at the feasibility with these heights and this density. And it is feasible. Of course, there are some conditions, as you see in the recommendations, that we would still have to work out. But for the most part, we're satisfied with it. But this offer will expire on December the 13th or at midnight, December 14th, if we do not approve this today. And they have reserved the right, the applicant has reserved the right to seek an alternative design, which would be, of course, higher densities and heights. So, and at that point, staff would be in a position to go to the, to the tribunal in, not in support of anything in addition, additional to what this settlement offer is. So it's crucial that this, this settlement offer be considered because this will be off the table after December the 14th. And we will revert back to previous proposals.
Okay, thank you so much. Can I ask a few questions? The first one is in the north, I remember we approved recently for Schnagle Village. If I remember correctly, that's a 15-story building, right?
Through you, Mr. Chair. That's actually a 10-story. So the maximum in that area is 10 stories. It's a significant distance north of this site, yes.
Okay, so in that area, I remember Cross Street, yeah, that's the Monson. For their recent proposals, is that going to be still 10 or going to be 15 as their phase two or phase three project?
Through you, Mr. Chair. We're actually still waiting. We're negotiating. We're still waiting for a resubmission. So at this point, they've proposed 15, but we are waiting for a resubmission. We're working with the applicants with Monshong at the moment.
Okay, and just the south of the Brookside, on the other side of the street, recently, city provide, approved around 200, maybe more than 200 semi-detached on the also sixth floor of the senior home.
Through you, Mr. Chair, if I may, that would be the, we did bring a report forward for just some housekeeping amendments and things. But that is, and I don't have all of the, I'm sorry, I don't have all of the statistics in front of me to give those to you. But that is townhouse development. There are two buildings at six stories. There also is approval through the Young and Bernard KDA for a 37-story along Young Street as well within that area. So it would be approximately 400 meters south of this site.
So as I remember, Brookside is only one lane. So on the So on the north and south side, in the southern way, in there around more than, I think at least 1,400 residents in that area. From traffic perspective, the only exit from that Brookside is Young Street and the single lane. So from the traffic perspective, is there any concerns result from our city's perspective?
With through you, Mr. Chair, for this particular development or for the entire area itself?
This area because source side that we have already proved. And now this place for the north side, there's only one, both side using the same street.
So through you, Mr. Chair, I can only speak to this particular development unless Director Druduski wants to answer that. They have reviewed this at a high level, this particular development. So they've taken a look at, I guess, the capacity of the road network to withstand this development. And there have been no issues identified to the local or regional road network for this development.
So for this three buildings, how many exit or entries will be there in the school?
Through you, Mr. Chair, there is one proposed write-in and write-out from Young Street, just because of the proximity to Brookside. And again, they have done preliminary transportation studies and our staff are quite satisfied that it can accommodate this development.
So there will be no exit from the three buildings to Brookside, just to entry to the Young Street, right?
Through you, Mr. Chair, there is no connection. First of all, there's quite a grade difference and there, we've explored of an opportunity through future development at sites that are on Brookside. But due to the grade difference, it's, there is no opportunity for that.
Okay, my concerns here is because if I remember correctly, in the middle of that Young Street, we have island inside there. Just in case emergencies, there only one entry in and out. How big the entry, the space will be? I'm concerned if this is only one in, one out, in case urgent. And because the middle of the Young Street, we do have, I forgot, maybe you have island there. This is case only one, one street, we can pass the traffic. That's going to be very dangerous.
So in answer to that, through you, Mr. Chair. So we have asked emergency services to take a look at this site, again, conceptually. And at the moment, they have no concerns. They have deferred all of their, so turning radiuses, the widths of the access routes, those will be done and designed through detailed design. But in principle, in terms of the heights and densities and the one access, the right in, right out, they have not identified any concerns. That is something that we did raise.
Okay, I have another question regarding to the 10 floors. Because neighbors close that 10 floor result concern. And do you have, I think you mentioned that that's going to be the 10 floor, then eight and then four. Is that going to be like a gradually coming into the community stand? Or what is that looks like?
So through you, Mr. Chair, the design is it's a 12 story, but they've added two step downs. So step down to eight and then a step down to four. And that will actually overlook the natural heritage system, which is approximately 77 meters in width. So there's a significant buffer between the existing residential to the west and this proposed development.
Okay, thank you so much. So as a local councilor, I see I heard a lot of story about this pieces many years ago. And now today we are landing here. I will say 22 in that area is too high compared with other neighbors. We only have 10 granted so far. And in the southern pop out 22, it's just like a double size of the north side. Yeah, it might be a problem from my views. But unfortunately, we do have expiration days. So make a trade off. If we reject this one, we come back. If the builder will promote another high densities and the high headings, we don't have controls. Everything we have landed to the OLT to make a decision. So so far, you know, we tried our best. So I'll move this plan forward.
Mayor West.
I thank you. Okay, I just, this is a long history as well. And it was certainly on the radar when I was the councillor for the ward. And I think this is actually something that, you know, in the last term of council, we seem to be seeing a number of applications that were really quite high. And in some cases, I would characterize them as outrageous. And it seems that in this term of council, we've seen at least three of them come down to a much, much, much more reasonable agreement. And I'm just very, very thankful for the more realistic, I think, viewpoint that we're, we have on this council and staff is able to work with that have gotten us to the point where we have this application before us. I mean, is it a little higher than what most people in the immediate area would like to see? Yes, I'm sure it probably is. But given the, what we are seeing here in this application and the fact that it's already at the OLT, I mean, I have no doubt in this particular case that we will get absolutely slaughtered if we don't accept this application. And frankly, in fairness, I don't think that it's unacceptable. I think that this, I'm sure staff has worked very hard to get them to where they are right now. And I think, given that we're in a housing crisis, we do need to be building units. And this particular application does supply a fair number of those units in a location that really, you know, it won't have any undue impact on the community. I'd like to know when the the application is going to be built. And I've actually got a note into the applicant to ask him that question. Because frankly, you know, given the fact that we don't control housing starts and we are in a slowing period right now with housing starts and with some very high yearly quotas that we have to meet. And, you know, we need them to get going as soon as we can. So, you know, this, and I mean, I'm particular, I think of the, one of the, you know, the applications also on Garden Avenue that in the last term of council were proposed that were just outrageous. And we've now got it down to a level that's, you know, quite reasonable and that the community should be able to accept and will create the housing quantity and affordability that we are looking for in our community. So I'm happy to support this. I thank the applicant for coming to a more reasonable application. I wish we could have got there frankly in the very beginning. But I thank the staff as well for the work that they've done and that they haven't given up on this. And I think this is a really good place that we're at right now.
Okay, I agree, Mayor West. This is, I think, the third time that our planning staffs come over the recommendation to accept a settlement offer for OLT cases that are being disputed. Rather than fighting, you know, in the, in the past, we, you know, if you, if you're too stringent on, you know, and you want to fight, you end up spending a lot of money and we didn't have a lot of success. The applicant always reserves the right to resubmit a proposal that can be disastrous for the community, quite frankly. And I, I know that these aren't the most palatable, you know, well, these are a more palatable version of what's originally applied for, for the community. And this is another 610 units to go with over 2,000 that, that we've, you know, we've settled on. And, you know, gets us closer to hitting that impossible target we've been given by the province. So Deputy Mayor Chan, did you?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, and I appreciate that local councillor questions and certainly representing the local areas residents. And I understand ideally it would be nice to be 10, 15 story and whatever I got it. And I remember last time, I think, we deal with it when the jurisdiction is here, that I do recall the number of residents who are here, who are here and also make the dedication. But I also concur with the colleague who spoke before me. And I, when I was looking at the staff report itself, not only is the height of all, maybe not all three buildings, but at least two or three have come down substantially. In fact, I just want to add, there are some additional things which I, I don't see last time is that now is also getting the Toronto and Northern Region Conservation Authority as well as the natural heritage. Because I remember there was some discussion, I wasn't happy about that either, about that 10 meter buffer. And look like this, it would not look like is now being addressed. And also the applicant will be also contributing one on 36 acres of national heritage lands. This is not what used to have. So that will help in terms of the, both from a transition standpoint and also preserving as much natural heritage as possible. Talking about transition, I also noted that the 45 degree angular plane, that was meant to be a measure for the transition, also being deemed satisfactory by staff. And, and of course, that would be nice if there was actually all just five, five, 10 stories, no doubt about it. So on that note, I do have a question through Mr. Chair. And I believe the manager already mentioned it. But I just want to confirm for sure that if council, well, actual council meeting is next Wednesday. But the deadline is December 13th. Should Richmond Council not giving direction to staff? Yes, we can accept this. So would manager de Maria could share with me or the rest of the committee? What would be, you kind of say it, say it. But what are the risk in terms of meaning that this deal is gone? And then go back, because this is two, going back to the revised proposal or the original proposal? I just want to be clear through Mr. Chair.
Through you, Mr. Chair, that's an excellent question. So again, if this is, if council does not endorse and accept this offer or direct staff to accept it, the applicant has reserved the right to pursue an alternative proposal. Now, they haven't indicated what that proposal would be. We were of the understanding they would revert back to the second submission. But they have recently shared with us another proposal, which right now is a without prejudice proposal at a much higher height. And so staff would, they would be pursuing that at the hearing, which is upcoming on January the 15th. We have a 15 day hearing set aside to hear this matter. So they would then be pursuing a much higher height and density. And staff would then have to take part in that hearing. And staff are not prepared at this point to, we have no direction at this point. But we have, we would be at a contested hearing.
Thank you for that response. I think this is also a very important piece of information. Because initially, I'm assuming that the applicant should this not be accepted by the city, would go back to the right proposal. But what I'm hearing the response, which is in public, is that potentially they can go back to have 35, 35, 35, what is almost like a de novo. I understand that OLT did the thing I know. It's like a de novo hearing, which meaning start afresh. So, so are we potentially running a risk of at least 18 or 15, 18 or 35 stories as the original proposed back a few years ago? Or even maybe worse, 35, 35, 35? Of course, we don't know. But from my end, I'm trying to balance the potential exposure risk to unknown versus to what we know. So in this particular case, I believe Mayor moved the motion. I will support that motion. Thank you.
Actually, Counselor Tree, I think, has moved the staff recommendations in 11.12. Counselor, someone else want to speak on this? Okay, nope. So I'll call the vote. All in favor? Any opposed? That carries. Okay, thank you. Yeah, that's all that was pulled. The rest had been moved under consent. Has there any, any members committee have other business? You're not allowed to. Okay, any emergency or time sensitive matters? And we don't have closed session, Mr. Clerk, so I'm going to accept the motion at this time to adjourn the meeting. Anyone? Mayor West, any discussion there? All in favor? Any opposed? That carries. Okay, very good. Meeting stands adjourned at 2:20 AM.